Good evening, everyone. We're going to get our meeting started. I want to welcome everybody to the December 13th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. And we are calling the meeting to order at 7:05. And if everybody will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 4th, 2022. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and the press. Mr. Cruz, can you please do the attendance?
Mr. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Day?
Here.
Mrs. Strappy?
Here.
Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mrs. Rushi?
Here.
We have Corin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a big agenda tonight, and we do have presentations, and we have our athletic director, Ms. Pomorezi, to do the full recap. So I'm going to invite you up. Thank you very much. We have some special guests with us here tonight in attendance who I'd like to recognize in a little bit. I'm so proud of all the time, hard work, dedication our fall student athletes and coaches have put into their sports and teams. Thank you for positively representing Verona through your leadership and sportsmanship throughout the season. So thank you. We're going to start tonight with football. The football team finished the season with an overall record of three and eight. The team was the top seed in the regional invitational tournament. In the American Gold Division, first team offense was Andrew Boyle, defense Alex Rodriguez, special teams Kieran and Patel. Our second team offense Zach Garmon and Shane Costigan. On defense, Mark Nigro. Honorable mention Luke Saro. Andrew Boyle was nominated for the 2022 Super Football Conference Steve D. Gregorio Man of the Year Award. This award focuses on a student's commitment to community service, strong character, selflessness before selfishness, and the positive contributions that they make to their community, school, and team culture. So congratulations again to Andrew Boyle. Our cheer team. On October 19th, the cheerleaders hosted their annual Cheer for a Cure event. This event included cheerleaders from Verona, Cedar Grove, and Caldwell. Together, these towns helped raise money for the fight against breast cancer. Verona was able to present Minette's Angels with a check for $2,500. Cheer also hosted their clinic that invited our kindergarten through eighth grade Verona cheerleaders to come together as a community to cheer as one large Verona team and family. The cheer team also took home the trophy for best stunting at the 2022 Bluefield Cheer for a Cure. Onto girls cross country. The girls cross country team. The girls cross country team had another successful season. They finished the season with a nine and two record. The girls were the SCC Liberty Division Champions. First team was Cara Dunphy, Caitlin Dunn, and Catherine Repoli. Second team was Shay Hagerty, Nadia Pietro, and Ellen Atal. An honorable mention was Jordan Dunn. Our girls soccer team had an overall. Great supporters here. The girls varsity soccer team had an overall record of 12, 5, and 2, and finished fourth in the SCC American Division, which is the toughest division. The team amassed 49 goals, 44 assists, for 142 points. The team's leading scorer was senior Brooke Reinaker with 19 goals and six assists. Brooke Reinaker received first team All-Conference, Victoria Niziolik Second Team All-Conference, Sam Rizzi, and Giuliana Scalanti received third team All-Conference. The team lost in penalty shootouts to Glen Ridge in both the counties and the states. Brooke Reinaker receives her 100th career point over Orange High School this season. Boys soccer. Our boys soccer team finished the season with an overall record of eight, seven, and two, four, two, and one in the SCC Liberty Division. The team made it to the corner final round of the state tournament. First team was Mark Sarah Riley Yang. Second team was Sean Steepold, Brian Cleaver. An honorable mention were Brandon Green and Joey Farmer. Our field hockey team finished their season with an overall record of nine and eight. They were five and two in the Essex Union Blue Division. They were the SCC Liberty Division co-champions. They made it to the first round of the NJSIAA State Tournament where they lost one nothing to Newton. Senior Ava Perry got her 400th career save. Liberty Division honors were first team Julia Balo, Amanda Cavalo, and Ava Perry. Second team Sarah Nautic and Dana Embriani. Embriana, sorry. An honorable mention was Olivia Egan and Jane Sorter. Our boys cross country team, we have one of the members of the boys cross country team here tonight, and I'll have him come up in a second. They had a highly successful season, the Verona Boys Cross Country Team. They traveled to Darlington, Ocean County Park, Six Flags, Great Adventure, Homedale in September, where Ian Zaluski, Liam McElurny, Luca DiFabrizio, and JB Russell received medals for placing in those invitationals. October saw the Division, County, and State sectional championship meets. Verona placed seventh as a team in their very competitive division and eighth as a team overall in Essex County. Ian Zaluski won both the American Division Championship and Essex County Championship. Liam McElurny won the Essex County freshman two-mile championship. The team traveled to Oak Ridge Park for their state sectional championship, where Zaluski won the state sectional title. McElurny, Wes Brown, Chris Luck, and Ian Zaluski all finished in the top 25 at the meet, and Verona finished third overall as a team qualifying for the state group championship at Homedale Park. At the state group meet, Verona finished the season as the ninth-best Group One team in New Jersey. Zaluski finished 10th overall qualifying for the state meet of champions for the second year in a row. Coach Winn is here tonight. Where's Coach Winn? Coach Winn, thank you for all that you do. Ian, both of you come up, please. Congratulations on a successful season. Ian Zaluski, like I said, was our SCC American Division Champion. He was our Essex County Champion, and he was our state sectional champion. Congratulations again. First team for American Division was Ian Zaluski. Honorable mention was Liam McElurny and Wesley Brown. Our tennis team. Girls, you can come up and coach. Tennis, tennis, tennis. They're all over out there. Our tennis team finished the season with an overall record of 13 and eight. SCC Liberty Division Champions, their last Liberty Division Championship was in 2016. They were the North Two Group One State Sectional Champions, and that last sectional title was in 2015. They were Group One State Finalists, and that was for the first time since 2006. They were the number-two ranked team in Group One in New Jersey. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Coach Jonathan Tai, who was named our NJ.com Girls Tennis Coach of the Year. Also with us tonight in the back is Coach Matt Swaj. Matt, you should be up here. Come up here. Individual honors. Margot DeCosta was first team All SCC Liberty Division, second team All Group One. Emily Baumgart and Madison Lipinski both were first team All SCC Liberty Division, first team All Group One. Shayna Cogan, second team All SCC. Evelyn Cogan, second team All SCC. Casey Calucci and Alex Sturdarian, second team All SCC Liberty. And Nadine Sharabi and Sarah Remler, honorable mention All SCC. I'm going to have Coach come up now to give out the state sectional certificates. Thank you, Coach.
Hi, everyone. So this is just going to go enough, but for Emily Baumgart. Cassie Calucci. Margot DeCosta. Alex Sturdarian. Evelyn Cogan. Shayna Cogan. Maddie Lipinski. And Nea Palori.
Let's hear it again for our girls tennis team. Great season, ladies. And last, but certainly not least, our volleyball team. Volleyball, come up, please. Our girls volleyball team finished with a record of 22 and six. They finished as number 16 in the state and second in Essex County this year. The team was the North Two Group One State Sectional Champions for the third year in a row. Marley Kramer was first team All County, first team All-Conference, first team All Group NJ.com. Patricia Rakova, first team All County, first team All-Conference, first team All Group NJ.com, third team All-State, and second in program history in kills with 782. Sydney Aiello, first team All County, first team All-Conference, second team All Group NJ.com. Nicole Hagaman, honorable mention All County and All-Conference. And Kendra Santos, honorable mention All County and Conference. Coach Ryan Brown is here tonight to give out the All-Conference awards.
All right. First, we have Nicole Hagaman. Come on down. Hernando Webster. Nandi Webb. Jackie Lawless. Emily Theobald. Kendra Santos. Cara De Mars. Katie Meehan. Marley Kramer. Riley Kenrick. And Jessica Theobald. Thank you.
Thank you again, girls volleyball, on another tremendous season. Thank you again to all our fall student athletes for coming out tonight. Thank you for always representing Verona. We started our winter season. Ice hockey is in full swing. Swim has their first meet tomorrow. Basketball opening night is Thursday, and track and field opens up on Friday. No, thank you, Mrs. Pomorezi, and congratulations to all our student athletes. Thank you for coming out. Impressive.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you, Mrs. Pomorezi.
Okay. So next, we're going to go back to our regular agenda, and we do have another presentation. We have Mr. Ronald Kramps from Alpha Facilities doing a facilities assessment report. So welcome. Very good. Thank you.
Can you run or swim or play football?
I was in the Navy.
Otherwise, they're out.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I've got some slides here that I will show you. So greetings to Verona Public Schools and to the school board. Greetings from Alpha Facility Solutions in San Antonio, Texas. My name is Ron Kramps. I'm in charge of facility and infrastructure asset management for Alpha, and I'm pleased to be presenting the results of our recent facility condition assessment to you. I'm also, I grew up in Scotch Plains, so it's nice to be back in the home state. I spent 23 years in the Navy. I'm a Navy veteran officer. I spent 20 of those years managing facilities for the Navy, and then nine years managing facilities for Charleston County School District. So I've been to a few board meetings and managed facilities there, about 50,000 student school board, school district with 85 schools. So a fun time there. But so I've been working for Alpha for a short while now, and very pleased to be presenting the results of our condition assessment. Here's the, whoops. There we go. So a quick agenda introduction of the company. The root cause of the assessment, scope, results, and recommendations. And I'll move quickly, but please stop me or ask questions at any point if you like. So we're a service-disabled, veteran-owned, minority-owned, small business, a licensed professional engineering firm, a partner with the National Council on School Facilities. You contracted with us through our Sourcewell contract, which gave you 8% discount pricing on some of the services on the left of the slide that I'll go through briefly here. We're an asset management company. That's our only business. We've been in business for about 15 years, and this is us, architects and engineers and construction professionals, IT and energy environmental professionals, all dedicated to helping owners like you understand their facilities, know what they own, the condition of what they own, and what to do about it, both in a short-term perspective and a long-term perspective. We've assessed over 500 million square feet over the years. You have about 336,000 square feet. We've assessed hundreds of school districts for many, many years. So now I'll discuss what I think is the root cause of the assessment, and really any assessment, and its entropy. So a quick physics lesson. Entropy is the real root cause of this facility degradation anywhere on the planet. Facilities go from a higher state of order and energy to a lower state of order and energy, and it affects our homes and our schools. It hits close to home. You see all these facility systems on the slide. They're all with life cycles, and we simply have to replace these systems as they age out. Schools are like big machines, right? We take in three, four, and five-year-olds, and 12, 13 years later, we produce educated students ready for the military or higher ed or what have you. And the facilities really take a beating along the way, and you simply have to replace these systems in accordance with their lifecycle. But are there any funding benchmarks to help understand what that costs? Yes, there are. And they're based on what's called the CRV, the current replacement value. What is that? So that's the local cost of construction in any area per square foot times the facility inventory. So for Verona, $318 per square foot is the cost of new construction. And with your inventory of 336,000 square feet, that gives you a CRV, a current replacement value of about $107 million. Now, this CRV, which seems to be related to construction, right? It's the cost of new construction, is nonetheless used for cost projections for maintenance and repair and renovation. And so some literature talks about these benchmarks for maintenance and repair. I'd like to mention just a couple very quickly. This is an important document from 1990 from the Building Research Board of the National Research Council of the United States. It's called Committing to the Cost of Ownership. And at that second bullet there, it says an appropriate budget allocation for routine maintenance and repair for substantial inventory of facilities like you own and like many school districts own will typically be in the range of 2% to 4% of that CRV, of that current replacement value. There are a couple other documents I'd love to discuss, but I'll skip to this one from 2016, the state of our schools from the National Council on School Facilities, the 21st Century School Fund, and the Center for Green Schools. And there's a very helpful diagram that shows this. It's called Modern Standards for Maintaining and Upgrading Current K-12 Public School Facilities. And sorry to read the two top lines, but the following proposed national standards for school facilities are based on building industry best practice. The percentages refer to the percentages of facilities CRV, that current replacement value, that should be invested annually to maintain school buildings in good condition. And so from the left of the slide there, 3% of that CRV for annual for maintenance and repair. So day-to-day work orders and custodial and grounds, utilities, things like that. 2% of that CRV for periodic renewal of these systems, roof, HVAC, playgrounds, doors and windows, and hardware, and all those sorts of things. And then 1% for as-needed alterations, 1% for deferred maintenance backlog, if you have any, and you do here. So how does that apply to Verona? So back to the Verona numbers, with a CRV of 107 million, these benchmarks would say that you should be investing for capital renewal, 2% of that CRV for you, that'd be $2.1 million per year. For maintenance and ops, the day-to-day maintenance and ops would be 3% of the CRV or 3.2 million per year. So I'm giving you those numbers so you understand kind of what the literature says. But we did our empirical investigation, and in the blue box at the bottom, our empirical assessment discovered a similar capital need of 2.3 million per year. So a good agreement between that 2.3 million and the 2.1, and a little bit higher in the empirical sense, because you've got a little bit of backlog. So there's even more that you would need to do to kind of catch up. So good.
Interrupt you.
Yeah, of course.
Does that number include salaries?
Yes, it does. Yeah, yeah, I think it does. Yes. All right. So far, so good. Makes sense. So I wanted to give you that background so you see where, what the literature says. Now, the contracted scope of the assessment was to identify and document current and forecasted conditions of your inventory, identify and document current site or paving needs around the schools, identify and document remaining service life of the major building systems, provide rough-order magnitude cost estimates for building system renewals and site repairs, forecast requirements over 20 years, the 20-year system needs, provide an FCI. I'll explain that in just a minute, the facility condition index, to compare or illustrate the relative condition of all facilities one to another. Input all that data into software that you've, I think, just procured or that you have. It's called Asset Essentials. It's brightly software. Equipment preventative maintenance schedules and develop facility floor plans for day-to-day use. Before we look at the results, let me define this FCI, the Facility Condition Index. It's a key performance indicator. It's used worldwide, really. How is it defined? Well, it's total deficiencies in a facility that are due today or overdue. So those are deficiencies over the value of that facility, the CRV. So the blue text on the left. So if you had a facility that had deficiencies of 3 million and its value was 10 million, well, that's three over 10.3 or 30%. So that would mean you need to invest 30% of the value of that facility today to bring it up to 100%, where it should be. You never want that number to climb. If that gets above 50 or 60, you're thinking about, maybe I just should just tear it down. But anyway, so your numbers are in the teens and low 20s. So this FCI is useful for comparing one facility to another. 15 is worse than 10, that sort of thing. It's also good for tracking progress. If it was 20 and now it's 15, that's good. And again, sometimes in decisions about replacement of facilities. Now on to the results of the assessment. I've got some narrative results here. First, so the facility condition assessment included the six permanent facilities, 336,000 square feet. The average FCI for Verona, 17, while the average FCI in five years climbs to 20. You had a district-wide roof renovation in 2020 and some lighting LED upgrades in 2008, so we just reported that. All buildings assessed were constructed prior to 1985. In fact, your average, your weighted average age of facilities is about 83 years. And so we recommend water sampling. Now, you're doing that already in the state of New Jersey by regulation, and that's good. We don't have that in South Carolina. Incidentally, it's not nationwide, but you have that program ongoing. So this is just for your information. Also, I've got some systems with R22 refrigerant. It's been discontinued. The only way to get it now is to reclaim it from old systems. So you want to phase out that equipment, because it just gets more and more expensive to buy the R22, since it's not manufactured anymore. Next, a brief overview of the equipment inventory. We were in all the schools gathering information about most of the high-value equipment for which you do preventative maintenance, putting a barcode or QR code tag on that equipment to facilitate future maintenance. You can walk up with your iPhone, scan it, get information about the equipment, or create a work order. Also, from that inventory, you're able to create preventative maintenance schedules. This is a sample from Verona schools. So scheduled maintenance, and these are steps. So if you could, you can't see the slide, but these steps, one, two, three, do this, then do this, then do this. And that's all uploaded to your software as well. So you've got a new preventative maintenance program that I highly recommend you support as much as you can. Next, I'll touch just on the system level assessment. We collect and report information about your facilities at the system level so that you can forecast replacement of the systems as they age out. You've seen some of these reports, but this is the cover of the report here, and there's pages that describe the conditions of each school in the report. Next is the table. Here's the overall table that shows the FCI, the Facility Condition Index, school by school. So you see school by school listed there on the left, the year built, the area in square feet, the total needs in '22 with that current replacement value for each school and the FCI. So that's where we're getting the average 17 FCI for all the schools, and then the total needs in '27 and the FCI is there. So you can start to see, well, where do I need to focus, which is the worst, that sort of thing. It can begin to help you prioritize what kind of projects you want to attack first. Next is the 20-year assessment. I don't expect you to be able to read this, but just to show that we give you a 20-year needs for your system-level replacement. So over on the left, you see exterior walls and roofing and HVAC, et cetera, down the left side, across the top are 20 years of needs, system by system. And there's school-based data in the report. You can see all the needs, but school by school over the years. And in that top right corner is the total over 20, really the 21 columns. You divide by 21, and it's 2.3 million per year is the capital renewal need. There are several ways to mine and report this data and think about this data. A couple are shown here. This is by system plumbing, life safety, interiors, HVAC, et cetera, current year needs versus five years in advance. So you can get an idea of where to prioritize by system. You can get an idea of how to prioritize by priority systems like roof, HVAC, electrical distribution are the high priority. Medium is like water, wastewater, doors, and hardware, stuff like that. And then low is finishes, carpet, ceiling, painting, et cetera. So again, this can just help you prioritize where you go next. Sample of the pavement deficiency. So in each school, there's a drawing. For each school, there's a drawing like this that shows where do I need to seal coat and re-stripe, where do I need to mill and overlay, where do I need to replace entirely, where do I need to work on the sidewalks, are there trip hazards, things like that. So pavement deficiencies. And now a quick summary of the results overall. So FCI of 17 climbs to 20 in five years. Your database is uploaded with the equipment inventory and the preventative maintenance schedules. And I commend you for gathering this inventory and condition assessment data. It's a very positive step into understanding what you own, the condition of what you own, and taking steps forward and making your facilities work for you through their lifecycle, sorry, instead of them, instead of you chasing them around. That's what facility asset management is really about. You know, have a baseline and a blueprint from which to move forward, and your facilities team really gets it. They're good asset managers, and they have the vision to move forward in facility asset management. Finally, just a few recommended suggestions, and I'll finish the brief. So we talked about facility asset management, and this is a roadmap, and I borrowed some of this from the American Public Works Association. But you can see building blocks along the roadmap of facility asset management. We focused on the three in the middle for your facilities team, asset inventory and condition assessment and project alternatives. But I would challenge you to consider a couple of recommendations that could fall in front of that, and they are the following. Consider enacting a policy to demonstrate Uh, a a policy to demonstrate intentional resourcing and stewardship of facility assets, a facility asset management policy. There's a mountain of data, and here I I've got a sample for you, I wrote, so. So um, there's a mountain of data that shows. A positive link between facility conditions and student achievement. There are really dozens and dozens of studies to show that. And so maybe you could consider enacting a policy that says we're going to invest in our facilities. It's an important. Uh, aspect for our school district. So that's just something for you to consider. Next is consider um. Adopting level of service standards. So you have targets for your facilities team. And uh, targets for your your occupants to understand the levels of service. Let me explain what I mean. Um, the the Association of Physical Plan Administrators, APA, that's the Higher Ed or College Level Association of Facilities Management publishes these standards. And their standards for maintenance, standards for custodial and standards for grounds. And they set these targets, the level one for maintenance is called showpiece facility, level two is called comprehensive stewardship. Level three is called managed care. Level four is reactive management, level five is crisis response. So where are you? Hopefully not that, right? Uh, custodial is really funny, it's orderly spotlessness, think Disney World. Uh, ordinary tidiness, think hospital maybe. Uh, casual inattention, that's where we were at in Charleston, that's what we could afford. And when I told the superintendent, she was shocked, but I said. That's what we can afford. And it was an eye opener. Well, level five is called unkempt neglect, you don't want to be there. That's think truck stop, right? Anyway, so this helps set targets for your facilities team, it helps your occupants understand where you're at, and then it helps the dialogue of, hey, can we get from level three to level two? That sort of thing. It's it's very insightful what APA has done. And I highly recommend it. Preventative maintenance is a program that you you can't do enough to support. Our friends in New Mexico found a forty percent savings in preventative maintenance work orders over reactive maintenance work orders. Anything you can do to enhance preventative maintenance. It saves you money, it pays for itself, so support that. And finally, we've given you a twenty-year assessment of needs. But you don't have yet a five-year plan of what you're going to actually fund. That that needs assessment doesn't reflect budget realities, right? So what are your budget realities? What can you actually afford? What are we going to put in the next, in the next five years? What's going to go in our long-range facilities plan that's required anyway in New Jersey, right? So so think in terms of capital renewal of these systems. And then my very last slide is just something to consider that I saw worked well. In Charleston and the state of Georgia, it's always hard to find enough funding, right? Especially for facilities. Something to consider is a sales tax collection. In Charleston County, we collect a one percent sales tax. There was a legislative action by the state legislature to allow. The county of Charleston. To put a referendum on the ballot and said voters, would you support a one percent sales tax? And all that money is going to go to the school district. For construction, for capital improvements or for capital maintenance. It's a big county and that's the district, about a hundred and ten million dollars a year. Uh, for capital improvements and capital maintenance. The whole state of Georgia has done this. And so on this slide, and there's the the website over on the left. Uh, on the right, it says the Constitutional Amendment in Georgia approved by the voters of Georgia in November of ninety-six, so twenty-six years ago. Allows local boards of education the option of calling for a referendum to ask their voters to approve a special purpose local option sales tax. So it's just an idea that I'm throwing out there. Uh, I've seen it work really well in Charleston, I've seen it work really well in Georgia. I don't think there's anything like that in New Jersey, and and every district struggles with funding, and maybe this is something that might work, you never know. So I just thought I'd throw it out there. That is, that is the conclusion of my brief. I hope I haven't gone too fast. If you have any other questions. Happy to help and hope to continue a relationship if we can.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, I I guess, once you had me a CRV and FCI, no, I'm just kidding. Throw these terms up, but. No, no, it's 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 great stuff. And I know we we really are happy with, you know, what you just discussed today, but you know, the whole idea of the asset management tracking it. Yes, sir. Long-term plan about what we're going to do with facilities where we are today.
Right.
Um, a couple of questions. Um, I know you're doing, you did stuff on the outdoors, mainly it was indoor, but you did the outdoor, you did the paving. Did you look at the fields, the turf? I mean, I know the turf's fairly new. Do you guys do all that kind of stuff too?
We could, but we didn't for this, for this study.
Okay.
Sorry.
Because that's something, no, that's just something we want to track too. I mean, those are, you know, items like that, but.
Yeah, I I would, I would recommend that.
Yeah.
Did that in my district.
Um, you know, but overall, I mean, I think it's great. And thank you for the presentation. I, you know, the the whole idea behind this is to be uh, prepared and prevent and.
Yes, sir.
Maintain and and continue to uh, keep the district moving forward in the right direction. Now, you're in South Carolina, the the taxi is a little bit different there than.
I'm sure it is. Yeah.
To go out and say you want to tack another one percent.
I know, can imagine that.
Where we are, it might be a little challenging, but.
But it puts it on the commerce instead of the the owners of the property.
We've done, we've done a few referendums that have have uh, got us to where we are today.
Probably be a hard sell.
And the only thing I did notice that you mentioned the lighting, you said something about the lighting in two thousand eight.
Right.
I've been on the board for nine years. We did a with Honeywell, we did a upgrade with all the lighting. When was, what was that called? They had a name for it.
Did we miss that?
But ESIP, yeah, ESIP. Yes, so they did a, they did the energy lighting, energy saving lighting plan, and it was done. It might have been like fifteen, sixteen, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So then in two thousand thirteen, eleven, fourteen, or something like that, yeah. So they would.
Maybe we missed that.
We all, all the old lights in the in the in the, you know, done auditorium and.
Right, right.
All the other rooms.
Replace with LED.
Yeah, yeah.
Check, check.
Yeah, so just double, double check on that.
Yes, sir, will do.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Question, yes. So I guess the first question is for Jorge. So the last two budgets, we we made deposits into our capital reserve. Um, ballpark, where are we at with our capital reserve right now?
Well, on our capital reserve, we are at one million. Um, and then we'll most likely will do another deposit with uh, this audit. So next month, uh, we're going to get the audit report. And there's going to be a fund balance available there, and the decision will be made to. Uh, deposit additional funds into that uh, fund balance.
Perfect. I guess the next question I have, so. Like the FN Brown school that had the highest FCI score, uh, it it's not our oldest school, but it's our most populated of all of our elementary. Was there anything in that particular building that jumped out at you to that that created such a high score as compared to some of the other schools?
Uh, from my notes in in the report, we had fire alarm, um, duck work. That was aged casework, which would be not that expensive, some stained ceiling tile, which. Could could indicate roof leak, obviously. Um, outdated panels, electrical distribution. Uh, emergency and exit lights, some branch wiring, uh, well beyond its recommended life. Portions of the electrical distribution, the panels, fire alarm and HVAC distribution. And resurfaced asphalt parking lot is in poor condition. So that was, uh, that was, it was not so much unlike other schools, maybe just more.
I got you. And when you made that FCI score, you you'd mentioned at some point that certain, certain repair works are more high priority than others.
I did.
Does that, does that factor into the FCI score as far as the? Is is all things equal that need fixing or does that factor to the FCI?
No, all things would be equal because it's solely cost-based. So it's the total deferred maintenance that hasn't been done by value. Over the total value. So it's only the the dollar value. Of what's been deferred over the value of the facility.
I got you. So we we, I guess we would have, we we could go work backwards with this report and.
That's true, that's true.
Kind of create a different metric based on the, what you, what you guys described as the high priorities for school.
You could, right. That's why you you kind of want to take the FCI and look at that. But then maybe you look at what are the, yeah, what are the systems? That are deficient in that particular, is it fire alarm or is it finishes? You know, so you might feel a little more strongly about taking care of fire alarm, electrical distribution. Than the finishes, not that the finishes don't make a big difference, they do. But you'd want to take all the data together, even though the FCI is highest at FN Brown. Maybe there's something that's a higher priority in another school. Just because of the type of system it is. You want to look at it all in 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 total, but that FCI certainly gives you a clue of where to, where to look first.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just to, um, first of all, thank you, because that was. One of the most concise, informative presentations I think I've ever witnessed as board member. So thank you for that.
You're most welcome.
Um, and Mr. Walker, just to your point, I think if you go back and look at the full report. Um, that we released, we released a while ago, it was a few months ago. Um, but wanted to wait to discuss it until Mr. Naturally had a chance to really do the term page review with Alpha. Um. I I think one of the first things you'll see on there is that electrical work at FM Brown. And I remember Mr. Naturally saying. During one of our facility meetings, like, look, there's the the list of stuff on here, like, some of this looks incredibly alarming, and you're like, oh, my God, shut the school down, our electrical systems are. All in disarray. And he said, let's just wait for him to present to us and you'll see that like. It's all super important, all of it, but but it's really up to us how we want to prioritize the funding with it. Um, so thank you for that. And just one question I have, and Mr. Day is going to love this question. Um, is. Um, in in also looking at at the outside, I know we recently had to do some stormwater repairs, and I know stormwater management is a major concern. Across our town in general, because we are in a valley. And we have a river that runs right through the middle of our town. We have faced significant flooding over the past few years, and it seems to get worse and worse every major storm that happens. Did Alpha do any assessment on our stormwater systems as part of that, or was it just like electrical and indoor plumbing?
Yeah, I don't think we did. And do you know?
No, okay.
I don't think we did.
Okay.
Um, recommended, um, I had a stormwater program. You you'll, you'll be amazed how much sludge you pull out of a stormwater system. You could probably get a civil engineer. Involved to to take a look at that if if you don't want to come back to us, but. But uh, yeah, we could look at that if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I guess the next question that has to be asked is, you know, our, our friend Nick sadly is is leaving us. So where where are we at with um, the process of? You know, getting someone that's going to be tasked with with this vital project.
So we're ready to start interviewing probably next week with second rounds after the holiday. Probably have someone to recommend by the. Second January meeting, maybe the first February meeting. Depending on how well that goes.
Happy to help.
Mr. Kramp, Mr. Kramp has a good background, so we could. But you want to move back to Jersey, you can go back to Scotch Plains, you're good to go.
It's like now those taxes are too high.
We'll talk an extra one percent just for you.
I'm going to regret saying it.
Yeah, especially with this crowd. Thank you very much. De Giuseppe, you've done first round interviews?
Not.
Oh, okay.
We, we're just looking, uh, the ad ran again this past Sunday.
Okay.
We were looking to see, um, we have what, twenty-some applicants? Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, awesome. Okay, so we are going to continue with our regular agenda, and next up is the superintendent's report, and that is Ms. De Giuseppe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye, Nick. My sharing. My sharing, my students.
Yeah.
So uh, tonight, I'll try to go through this fairly rapidly, because I think we have a pretty clear answer, looking at the some of it anyway. Uh, so I'll be looking at um. My uh, hundred-day transition entry plan report, which is available online. Basically, the board has seen this. Um, the plan is actually on the superintendent website at our district. Website. Uh, I had five goals, develop strong collaborative effective relationships with the board. Um, in order to um, build a foundation uh, for good management and governance and um, generate a new strategic plan. Ensure an effective, efficient, orderly transition of leadership, keeping a focus on increased student achievement for all children. Create opportunities uh, for uh, me to listen broadly and deeply to a multitude of stakeholders. Um, and get a comprehensive understanding of Verona, the school system. Focusing on those areas um, that um. Came out during the superintendent search surveys as being very mean of meaningful for the community, which were focusing on students. Um, as student, social, emotional learning, staff morale and community trust. Um, identifying activities that must happen immediately to ensure a uh, an outstanding opening of schools or beginning of the school year. And this one's kind of hard to measure, but to build excitement uh, for our vision and mission, our future strategic plan. And establish commitment to engage in anything that needs improvement. So um, I went through, kept, kept a log throughout my activities across this process. It went very quickly, I just need to say, a hundred days is faster than you think. Um, so what I did is I assigned whether or not I felt like I had accomplished the the these goals specifically. Or whether I made progress toward them, or if I needed to address uh, additional process, uh, progress. So I would say, um, I feel like I've been working with this board for a very long time. It doesn't feel like it's just been since July. Uh, I think I accomplished building that um, collaborative uh, relationship with the board and hope to extend that to our new board members. Who I've been, who I've met with both already. I think it's important for effective governance for the superintendent and board to have a good relationship. Uh, with regard to ensure an orderly, orderly transition, I also assigned accomplished on that. I think we we certainly went from. Doc, Dr. Dianosio, who left last November. To Dr. Fernari, who uh, along with the administrative team here. Um, went above and beyond to welcome me early before I um. Within a week after my approval. I was meeting with uh, the administrative council cabinet, uh, with the central office staff, the hall council. Um, and each principal welcoming to their school so I could start meeting teachers before they left for the summer and students. And uh, I I think I have a really good idea. Not being too ambitious with my understanding, but of of where focus needs to be. Uh, right away, and then with nigh on some long-term uh, planning. Um, and where I've said I've accomplished this doesn't mean it stops, it just means I think over a hundred day period, what I had planned to accomplish was accomplished. Um, uh, number three was create opportunities uh, for me to listen broadly and deeply. I think this came as the most important. Component of this plan in that one of the most uh, obvious. Communications uh, that came from uh, the surveys, the parent meet and greets with Monica Brown from Hazard Young and Atia. And from my discussions with uh, the administrators, teachers, et cetera, was um, a focus on better communication. I know the board had individually spoke to me about this, it came up during interview. Um, both first and second round. Um, so I really wanted to get out there and meet as many people as I could. I did not um, give myself an accomplished here. I think I need with, to meet with more parents and more groups of students. Um, but hundred days went quickly. And uh, there is a log, you can look at my log, it's linked into the plan report. That shows, um, you know, it's not an exhaustive list, there were others that maybe didn't get recorded. Um, usually drop-ins or things that weren't in my calendar, because I use my calendar to go back and build that that log. Um, but I do, I definitely have more parent meetings. Um, my my first. Uh, indication that it might be good to do a combined parent meeting is that we have a new director of special services that just started. I want to call um, Mr. Cruz new, but he's no longer new because he's gone past that first year, but he can certainly join us as well. Uh, Mrs. Ackerman is the newer uh, director of school counseling. And um, we are, uh, we've made a decision and I'm about to meet with the new supervisor of special services, and hopefully I'll be able to make a. A contract deal with that person. And if we hosted some combined meetings where people could come out and meet a bunch of us uh, together. It might generate more interest um, than just doing a, you know, come have coffee with the superintendent. Heard she's boring. Very little charisma. Anyway. Um, uh, so I I think I have some work to do there, but again, this stuff doesn't stop, this is a constant um, listening. Um, I I think we did a good job. Uh, Dr. Miller and the principals and the supervisors really worked with me to make sure that we were ready to open schools. So there's nothing more nerve-wracking to come into a school this July. Knowing that September comes at the same time every year, and it's always like in a blink of an eye. And not knowing any systems, not knowing how things are done, and the fear of. Not being ready. And um, that didn't happen, we were ready, it opened uh, very efficiently. Could it have been smoother in certain areas? It always can. Um, but I I think it went well. So I gave myself a substantial progress made there. Uh, and building excitement, as I said, this one is really hard um, to measure, but I have gotten a lot of really positive feedback. About my energy, about um, some of the things that I've done, communications have been improved. I know people have reached out and thanked me for my in- increased communication or. Different communication, I'm not going to say better or not better, but um, I I'm really working hard at being uh, clear and transparent. And building trust that this community needs. And I want to go on record by saying it's not just this community. After COVID, it's every community needs to have uh, that clear um, communication. Nobody felt like they were being communicated well. All we were doing is superintendents over the COVID pandemic, the really intense pandemic, because we felt like we were communicating, 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 but you're not communicating. I'm trying, you know, so um, I think that's true across the board. So if you want to see um. where the plan can be found, it's right on my page under superintendent. The plan's there, the report is there and then a timeline for the communication goals on there. I'll actually link the log as well. I just have to redact some parent names and stuff. But as soon as I get that redacted, I'll put it up there as well. Any questions about?
More, more a comment. I appreciate the format that you sent it to us and as board members, it was really nice to read through it. It was very clear, just your own assessment of your own progress was great. The log was awesome, you know, to really get, get a handle. So as board members, I think you did a great job in communicating that to us. The first 100 days has been a challenge for us as well because, you know, with each election cycle, boards change. We're a new board. You get to know each other's dynamic, how you work and trusting each other. And we had, like you said, from November of 2020 to this past July, three different superintendents who have different styles. And again, like not better or worse, but different. And you building a rapport with five new of us along with the administration. So it's, it's a juggle act for everybody. And come January, when we do the reorg and we're going to invite our two new board members in, it's going to be a whole nother transition on getting to know each other and working together in style. So it's a constant. It's a constant, it's a, it's a hamster wheel. And, and I commend everybody because I think that we do a relatively good job at, you know, getting to know each other and coming together as a cohesive group. So thank you for the work that you've done in these past, you know, few months and I look forward to seeing what's next.
Just glad the 100 days was fast for you because if you said it was like an eternity, I'd be worried that you'd be like, I'm out of here. But I'm glad it was fast and we do appreciate you jumping in there and the report was great and, and I'll definitely look forward to many more days.
Thank you. You are coming back for your sense of humor, right? The open mic. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next shorter, was short segment that I'll try to keep it short because I think there's a clear outcome here. So the board charged me as one, and one of my superintendent performance goals was to find a consultant to assist us in developing our next strategic plan. So you would think there's a lot more companies that do that. There really aren't. There's a lot of companies across the country that do it, but not that many that want to do it in person or even a combined hybrid. One of, I think some people would think it's a silver lining from the pandemic and others that would see it as no, there's no Zoom silver lining. But people don't want to travel anymore. They want to do it remotely. And I think when you're building a strategic plan, working with stakeholders and, you know, community members, educators, board members, administrators, maybe one or two meetings you can get away with doing virtual, but that's, that's an in-person activity. So those companies that were not willing to even come out to do anything in person, didn't make the cut. So there were four. And Hazard Young and Atia, which this board knows because you use them to do your superintendent search. I actually have worked with Hazard Young and Atia when I was in Livingston on their strategic plan, going back a while ago now. But they did a very thorough job. I'll give them that. On strategy, education elements, and then New Jersey school boards, which I've used in the past to do a strategic plan in my former district. So I looked at basically an overview of what each offer and then gave the board their, their fees and add-ons. So Hazard Young and Atia have been doing this for more than 30 years. They partnered with more than 2,000 school districts to do strategic planning. This also, their executive searches are included in here. So I'm not going to say the 2,000 strategic plans, but they, because they do more searches than they do strategic planning. And they will customize to some extent the process that they use. So they do three phases, engaging the community, focus and plan for the future and implement and evaluate the impact. So this is, it's, it's very, you can, I'll, I'll put this on the website so people can read the bullet points. Their fee is about $30,000 to do this, start to finish, and that does not include, there's some add-ons that it does not include. They do a breakdown about how you can pay them installments. On strategy, this, these guys are located out in Lake Tahoe. We decided we were going to go out there for one of our meetings. Similar, the only, I mean, similar approach, it's strategic planning is not that different depending on, on which company you use. They don't do five-year plans here. On strategies, they will do a five-year plan if you want them to. They prefer a three-year plan. And they also had a unique dashboard, a data dashboard that they track your action plan and your results and it's very user friendly. It's very, and very nice.
Question. What is the pros and cons between doing a three-year versus a five-year?
I don't, I don't see why three-year would be better than a five-year. Sometimes it's hard to plan and budget five years out. It's hard to plan and budget two years out in a school district. Really, I think you don't know what the state of, you know, finances are going to bring or what they're going to cut. Anything, I would just say it's a big process and to do a three-year than you're doing three years before you're even really getting into the meat of it. That would be my pros, my personal pros and cons.
Yeah, I mean, and to add on to that, I would think that three years isn't, I mean, these are huge goals that we're setting for the district, right? And you know, we're going to measure them incrementally, incrementally. We're going to measure the progress of them, you know, going forward. And for a lot of these goals, progress can't be measured over one year, two years. Sometimes you don't really get to see the fruit of that progress until the end of that fourth or fifth year. I think it depends on what the goal is, you know what I mean?
Right.
You know, for example, like if the goal was to diversify our hiring practice, just taking from, you know, one of the goals from our DEI committee. That may take a long time, you know, by the time we really fine tune and hone these hiring practices that we're hoping to change and we start attracting different candidates and we start hiring different candidates. I think that that's something that's going to take a lot longer than just three years.
Yeah, I'll give you an actual, a concrete example of something that we know takes more than three years. So in my former district, one of the action items we were looking at is to change the way we address student learning, which is huge, right? So we decided that we were going to engage students in their own learning and move to an academic teaming format where students are working in teams more than they're working, more than they're sitting in rows and getting kids to be active participants in their learning. That is extremely different as you go up the grade levels from elementary to middle to high school and what you see teachers doing in terms of their pedagogy, in terms of their instructional practices. And while, you know, for elementary teachers, getting kids to work together is very second nature, releasing that independence to them is the hard part. For, I was a high school teacher, I'm going to speak for myself, my husband and my colleagues. We were content area specialists and we taught content. We, we've seen at the high school level, but that, it takes a good three years to get the majority of your staff even introduced and trained to new ways of thinking versus then looking at, well, what did it lead to with regard to student outcomes? Did, we did all this work over three years. Did we do a program evaluation? So it's, it's, three years is a very short period of time in the life of education to say, we're going to do something, get it done and measure it unless it's, you know, adding something to the budget or.
So I guess just one other question that I had when we were, when I was looking through this, the only thing I didn't see, and I know this was something that you have mentioned quite a few times, is the idea of hiring a company that can also help with these action plans because the action plans are the meat and potatoes. You can have these wonderful measurable attainable goals over the course of five years, but it's the action plan that's going to get you there and that's what you're using to measure the progress of the goal. So I didn't really see.
On strategy does a playbook. They call up their playbook.
Maybe that's why I was like, I didn't really see that sort of language in there. So they're the only ones who will provide that playbook.
Hazard Young and Atia to some extent will work with the, with the administrators to formulate a rough draft, but.
An add-on?
It's like an add-on, but it also is, it's still just a rough draft. I mean, it would be very difficult for them to come into a district and not knowing the district and say, you're going to do this, this and this. However, on strategy had been working with, you know, schools for years and they call it their plan book and that's why they have their own software that tracks.
Yeah, to jump in also, like we're, we're going to set, you know, look to get consensus with a number of goals. But ultimately it's, that's what we're paying her for, to, to, to figure out how she's going to accomplish them. And that's what we're going to evaluate her on. So it, you know, if, if, if she needs consultants along the way here or there, then that might be reasonable, but ultimately it's, it's, it's on her.
And I'm not nervous at all. I'm sorry. So the fee for on strategy, he said range of 17 to 27 and that depends on whether it's three or five. But it also doesn't include the software package, which is an additional three to $6,000 per year. So you're certainly paying for those. And then the one that I actually have to say I was most excited about, and you can see why. And the excitement went away. So they were really, they work in education in a very different way. They're grassroots organization that came about for innovation versus strategic planning. And they're actually new to strategic planning, newer within the past seven years. They have a similar flow chart, right? So they engage with stakeholders, define strategic direction. Here they, they call it outcomes and metrics. They, they do more of a communication plan. So the cost here is that they have a PR group that will market and push out your plan. We can do that because they cost $98,000. I actually emailed her and said, hi, it was great talking to you. I loved your presentation. I think there might be a decimal place error.
Are they hiring?
Right. And she said, no, no. And we didn't think we were going to be the most expensive. I said, only three times more than anyone else. So while they were very exciting and were very innovative, it's probably safe to say we won't be using education elements here in Verona or anywhere in New Jersey for that matter. I mean, I was talking to my colleagues and saying 98,000, like, is there schools I could afford that? So New Jersey school boards. So they also, they don't have a pretty flow chart, but they also have a pre-planning, planning meetings, developing the action plans. That's up to us. They'll present the strategic plan to the board. And they help with the annual review. So I, I worked with Mrs. Peterson and, and associate from school boards. And they, they really help with facilitating communication with the public. And they facilitate the meetings. They moderate and, and they're good to have because there will be disagreements among people in different groups and they're very good at moderating. And that way the board, the administration don't have to jump in and go. They'll do that. And they know what good strategic plan goals look and sound like and what not great strategic planning areas and goals sound like. And I have to say they were very helpful. It's a big undertaking, but one thing I can promise this board to do to the best of my ability is make sure that if we do all of the work in the strategic plan, that we are living it all over the place. And that's something that, that's the hardest part of a strategic plan. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, $4,000. No add-ons.
Who, who did we, did we use anyone last time? We used, um, she now works for HYI. Oh, wait, that's right.
Use hers for the past two, right?
I think two or three. We might have used her for three. I can't think of her last name. I could see her, her face. I can't think of her last name. Yeah. So thank you for this and.
They have a calendar. They just go over. Yes, the three day. And they're actually a three-year too, but you can do a five-year with them too.
Yeah. So our timeframe for as a, do you have one that you're, you're going to recommend to us?
Yeah, I would like to start in mid-January and have the first meetings early February. And that way we'll be done by June. At least we'll have all of our goals, all of our goal areas and all of our goals, and we can be working on the action plan over the summer.
So for those in the public who are interested in, in working on the strategic plan committee, how much time can they expect to sort of invest into this?
Three meetings.
So, so three, but like three days, three meetings, yes, three whole days.
Three meetings. I think if I recall, I can check with Mrs. Peterson.
A few hours each meeting?
Yeah, it was maybe three, three and a half hours each meeting.
If I remember from, from school board, from the workshop, they said it was like a Friday evening. And then like the whole day Saturday, and then maybe like one extra day outside of that to like wrap it up.
I don't know. That's not how we did it, but I tell you, their calendar is early March 7 to 9, late March 7 to 9, April 7 to 9, and then everything else is, yeah. I mean, we could probably do more. I know the first meeting was partly the superintendent presenting the state of the district. Like where are we to get started? And then, and then they took over and did some, yeah.
And I just want to put out, we, we do have a student representative here tonight. So Ms. Sodaho, Sodaho, I'm sorry, wasn't able to come. So we have a substitute, Mr. Daniel Franklin. Is that correct? So listening to this. Oh, no, I just, I just wanted to talk to him about the strategic plan because I think this is something that I want to point out to you as a student. Once we start doing these meetings, students are welcome and encouraged to come because like I was talking to you before the meeting, all the work this board does, our students are our end users. So it's something to, to keep in mind when they start looking for volunteers, if you have an interest or bringing that up.
Able to add on that, I think that should be like, usually like, I guess I put that to the student council to like advertise towards students because I think students mainly like see the like board of education as this like, I don't know, like a sacred thing that's like way above like the actual students, right? Like, so if maybe like how the student council put up some fires or something, just to say like, there would be like this workshop if you want to like.
Yeah. Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Now that you met us, now we just burst your bubble.
We're down to earth.
This is like quicksand. We will grab onto your ankles.
He's like, I'll never volunteer, I'll volunteer for this again.
Thing I'm going to, and this is actually shorter. So we know, we've been talking for a couple of years in, in Verona about new housing developments that are being built. We've had a couple that already have gone up. And I believe both developments that are being planned are in the FNB and Brookdale area. FNB is bursting at the seams. Brookdale does have some room in it, but we'd have to really look at the impact of what these new housing developments may do with regard to balancing across our schools. And so we are looking to do a demographic study, statistical forecasting. And again, you're going to see here difference in cost, but also difference in work product. So to statistical forecasting, and I can give both, I can give you, well, you actually have access to the proposals, right? So they look at a community overview, I'm sorry, live birth data, historical trends, enrollment trends. They take a look at special education. And I asked, I put an asterisk here only because with Mrs. Simmons coming in, there may be some changes in the way we roll out specialized programming. So it may be harder to look at trends in terms of like self-contained special education. We don't currently have self-contained at the high school. We are looking to add that. We recently added self-contained at the middle school. We don't have self-contained in K1, two. So there may be some changes coming prior to this development, housing developments going up that may affect the numbers in self-contained and specialized. And enrollment projections, they do two different types of enrollment projections. We definitely would want great configuration if we're going to go with that simply because we have neighborhood schools. And that's where we want to see which schools are going to be impacted, not that we can't to some extent figure that out on our own. So that one is a little bit more expensive, but it's already figured into their fees. They also look at capacity analysis and housing growth. So fees for statistical projections, I'm sorry, statistical forecasting is. statistical, um, projections, uh, I'm sorry, statistical forecasting is that it's about eleven thousand dollars. And that includes that grade level, um, breakdown. Um, if you wanted them to come to a board meeting, they would charge you a thousand for that. I'm going into that business. Shapefile creation, shapefile creation is actually, um, something that's might be beneficial. They actually take up a program that has, um, a housing map and they drop pins for every student location. Right now our housing map is a list of streets and what school they go to. I don't have a map or I can go, oh, they live here. Oh, that goes to Brookdale. So right now it's, and there's a couple of areas that are at my discretion. That don't go to, aren't designated to any one school. So that shapefile would be an interesting, um, addition that we don't currently have. And student geocoding is similar to that. And then the second demographer, uh, is Ross Haber and Associates. And his, his work product is much smaller, uh, to begin with, but he will do more of what, um, statistical, name of them, statistical forecasting does, um, upfront. So their costs are thirty-five hundred for just a typical, demographic study. And then if you want a facility utilization study, that's another five thousand. So similar cost to get the same product over to installments versus you get a, a much more robust product upfront. Both, um, I checked with schools, districts that have used both and are both satisfied with the parts they got, they've gotten. So that is, um, my report for this evening. Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment, a couple of comments. Uh, the first is I, I agree. I think it's been a really optimistic first hundred days, uh, in your service. I think you're doing a great job. And I also think that, um, you know, Jorge needs to be complimented because there's no way you'd acclimate so quickly if he didn't have the attitude that he had toward your transition. So thank you, Jorge. I'm sure, I know for a fact you, you're, you're helping out big time. Uh, I think you, you see, you quickly have been seeing what, what you needed to see and what needed to be seen and, and started making changes. I love the fact that we have a superintendent that can run a board meeting without attorney and without the world falling apart. So, um, I'm glad we did that. I think that, um, with the, um, with the, with the, the possibility of, for the eventuality of getting these, these, this development coming in. And just the idea of like, wh- what do we do if eighty percent of the kids are in the same grade band or something like that? There's so many variables that, you know, I've worked with Haber before and that they were okay. But I, I think that, you know, if, and I don't want to use this word, but if we had to redistrict or if we had the least areas or if we had to do something, they're rather robust and that we really should look to get as thorough of a, a service and an analysis as possible. And then with the, um, the school boards association for the three D planning, um, I just finished one with them last week and they did a fine job. You know, they, they were fine. Um, so great first start.
Thank you. And yes, um, our Mr. Cruz has been wonderful, as is Mr. Village and the other central office staff that I meet with like, I think daily. I started writing down, I meet with him every day. So I'm just going to stop listing those meetings. Miss Dr. Miller, same thing.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Um, so continuing on with our regular agenda, we have Mr. Cruz and the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report.
All right. Good evening. Uh, could I make it short and sweet? Uh, I just have a few items, just two items, um, really, uh, the first one is, we have our October, uh, two thousand twenty-two secretary report, treasurer's report and the, uh, the budget transfer report and their own agreement. Lastly, I, I want to highlight, uh, two resolutions on, on tonight on the finance, which is resolution number six and resolution number seven. This is a proposal to pursue a HVAC and HVAC grant, uh, being offered, um, through the NJ Clean Energy. The grant requires an HVAC, uh, assessment. Um, if awarded, it will cover seventy-five percent of the, uh, of the project cost. Mr. Naturali and myself, uh, were working closely with our architects on this project, uh, which allows us to replace units that weren't included in the two thousand nineteen referendum. So, uh, just to, um, add a little context to that, in the, uh, twenty nineteen referendum, at the time we were over budget, um, with HVAC, I believe we, we only had a lot at six million. So we started shaving off, um, any classrooms that actually had split units. But the reality, the newer, uh, units are, are in place have actually, uh, outside air exchange as opposed to, the split units that are, are in those classrooms. So this will allow us to actually, um, get us to where we initially wanted to be at, in the beginning of that referendum.
He was talking about those. And maybe this is something totally different when he was talking about using that coolant that doesn't, isn't manufactured anymore. Was that for refrigeration? Cause I know we did remediation on that already. Or is this for HVAC?
So that there are some older units and, and what happened with the referendum is that if, if there were some older units that we wanted to replace, but it was still functioning, we left it alone and we, we started focusing on that. So there are some in this, um, plan, it would actually replace those.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and that's pretty much it. Uh, this concludes my report for tonight. Um, I want to wish everyone a warm and happy holidays and, uh, thank you so much as we close this, uh, twenty twenty-two year and I'm excited to open up the, twenty twenty-three calendar year. And also, uh, I, I won't have a chance to say this, but, uh, to Mr. Day and Ms. Strappy, you know, it, it was a pleasure, uh, serving side by side the last eighteen months with you both. And, and you've both been part of the committees that, you know, I kind of like led. Um, so it's, it was, it was always great to kind of like, hear you guys out, challenge me, hold me accountable with your questions. Uh, and it was always good. Um, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Here's just for stand-up. Comic relief. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. We are going to move on now. We have our student representative, uh, giving a report. And like I said, Ms. Sodato is absent and substituting for her is Mr. Frankla. And I want to welcome him. He is a sophomore here at Verona High School and a member of the student council. So thank you for taking us on tonight.
Thank you. It's, it's an honor to be here. Um, uh, just going to go over a couple of things that Reese is doing and that she's gonna, uh, start like doing when she comes back. Um, so the first thing is she's organizing a presentation on board policies to VHS's Gay Street Alliance in the new year. So she'll be going over existing board policies regarding LGBTQ students to ensure students know what areas are covered in existing policy and ask about student concerns. She also published the meeting summary of the November meeting on the high school's newspaper's website, uh, the Fair Viewer. And her and Ava Vega, who's also a junior at VHS, will be collaborating with the environmental club to start a native plants garden on campus. They'll be using the green house in the winter before transplanting the seedlings in the spring. And a couple of things that student council is doing right now in our meetings, um, we're running our annual toy drive for the Hawkins Elementary School in Newark. So we've been collecting toys, as you've probably seen at the front of the building, uh, for the past few weeks and we'll be delivering to them, uh, to elementary schools before, uh, winter break. I think actually next Tuesday will be our thing. Uh, this student council is going to be wrapping gifts Wednesday at lunch and Thursday after school. So, um, that's when we're going to be getting the stuff ready for delivery on Tuesday. I've also began, uh, planning a winter formal, most likely taking place in February. Uh, it's going to be hosted at the school, possibly the gym. So hopefully we can include snacks and drinks. Uh, we're going to try to get like donations from local businesses for that and give them my tax breaks. Our tax deductions off, off for that. Um, and possibly a rose fundraiser where you buy some of the roses in the school. Also, uh, we're going to have a spirit week to be hosted in winter, um, probably January or February. Um, an example would be a winter whiteout or holiday colors like, you know, green and red. I personally polled, uh, the, uh, sophomores in our school on Instagram and it was like a seventy-five to twenty-five percent yes to no. So that shows like, uh, that there's a clear desire for students to get more like school spirit. So we're going to be going off that and doing more of that. And, uh, in the spirit of that, we're going to have a pep rally next Friday. So it's going to feature sports competitions and a bunch of school spirit activities to, you know, increase school spirit in the high school. That's it for what I have here. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I think our students are just really amazing. I just want to say that.
I wanted to just say that, um, I don't think there's been a school dance in a long time here at the high school. So I'm really excited to hear. I mean, um, did you have a school dance here when you came here? Cause I did. Yes, it was in the cafeteria, but we wanted to have it in the gym and they wouldn't allow us to, but it was, it was in the cafeteria. But it's so exciting to hear that you guys are going to be doing that. And I'm happy to hear that the spiritware and all the spirit stuff is going to be coming back. Cause I think it's very needed here at the high school for you guys to have a positive environment. So I'm happy to hear all that. Thank you.
Kind of call the newspaper, the Fair Viewer. That's cute. That's a nice name.
Yeah, you can subscribe to that. Um, and anybody in the public count, if you go on their website and you'll just get the, um, an email link when it comes out and it is, it's great. Yeah. So thank you very much. And, you know, I, I say each meeting, um, it's great to have a student voice at the table. So truly appreciate your time coming out tonight. We're going to continue on to our committee reports and we have education.
Yes, we met yesterday and we were able to meet with, uh, Ms. Simmons, our new special education director, special education. It was, it was a big meeting. Um, so bear with me. We discussed, um, we first discussed new policy, uh, three, two, three, two, which is tutoring services, which we never had. So it's.
She shouldn't be on the agenda. I see that Mrs. Stabarski put them on there because they were on that agenda.
Right.
They're not in the folder because, um, right, Dr. Miller wasn't aware that we have a policy committee now, which I've. Yes, so we'll table that when we get to it because no one has seen it. It's, uh, policy number two. I, yeah.
And then also on, under, let me see, under curriculum on our agenda, number six. The request for classroom and library materials reconsideration. This, it doesn't have to be a resolution, but it was added to the agenda, um, just for transparency. This is just a way for the public to challenge library materials, um, but it's a structured way to do it. So it's consistent no matter what is being challenged. Curriculum Council next meeting is tomorrow, um, from three to four, looking at, uh, new high school elective options. Updates on elementary social studies, um, updates for our math program dimensions for kindergarten and the amplify, amplify math for HBW and VHS. Um, and then talking about DEI professional development for, uh, February and March. There is a, um, I guess, uh, new curriculum, um, and re-adoption of curriculum for personal finance that can be found on our curriculum docs. And, um, that is also on our agenda. But this is, I haven't written down here, but I think it's a different resolution now that. Anyway, moving on, um, Grand River Solutions final report has been released. And, um, the DEI facilitators and coordinator, along with Mrs. De Giuseppe and, um, will be leading our two meetings tomorrow and Thursday to discuss the report and its recommendations. Math coaching's been very successful at the elementary level. Kindergarten teachers are doing great with it, um, playing games and teaching kids to love math, not just do math. Um, and that goes along with Mr. Jackson, our math trainer, meeting with kindergarten teachers as well to work with them. And, um, our new T C I social studies program, um, has been going well. Our teachers are doing an excellent job implementing it. Um, and now third and fourth graders have their own student counts. Your fall start, start strong individual student records are coming to you soon. And a presentation of the data by law has to be presented and will be done so in February. Oh, okay. And it looks like the DEI facilitators, Dr. Miller and Mrs. De Giuseppe, um, will be, updating our recruiting, hiring and retaining procedures. And the goal is to put this into place by April and they're looking for volunteers from their admin team and staff. First round observations are just about done for tenured and non-tenured teachers. And, um, we spoke a little bit about the letters training. This is still ongoing. And it's really just focusing on the science of reading, how children learn to read, the importance of all the components of learning, reading, not just reading and, and comprehending. It's more of the science behind that. Um, and the teachers are loving it. We have a huge cohort. And I think that was it. Glad to see we have some perm subs on the agenda tonight and, uh, sad to say that, um, our director of facilities, Nicholas Naturali, has issued his resignation. He is, moving up to a much larger position and opportunity outside the district. And I think that was that, um, other than the, um, on for approval tonight is the, right? Is that on for approval tonight? The capstone core co-coordinators. So the students have that opportunity during the third trimester, which is an incredibly invaluable opportunity.
That's athletics co-curricular number one.
Yes, co-curricular. Thank you. Um, special education committee, um, the, um, our director of special services, Ms. Simmons, met with child. And, um, it was decided to move our national inclusive week activities to January. So there was more time to prepare meaning, more meaningful activities for, um, elementary, um, middle and high school. And, um, I think that was really the, the bulk of that conversation. Was talking about that and just sort of welcoming, welcoming her and, um, you know, hearing her about, you know, certain changes that she would like to see or sort of envisions and evaluations she needs to do overall in the district and getting to know everybody. And that was it. So I miss, thank you, Mr. Rocka.
No, it's just that for the, for the classroom library media reconsideration, I just, I don't see what's for us to approve.
There's nothing.
Yeah. So I think it's in our business.
Yeah, I, I just wrote myself a note to adjust how information goes from Dr. Miller to Mrs. Stabarski. Okay. She looks at the agenda from education.
So do you want to pull it or table it?
Pull it, yeah.
Yeah, cause I know we talked about that committee like that shouldn't have been on.
Yeah, so, so that's, uh, resolution number six.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we're going to pull that.
Yeah, it's not a change to a policy. It's just a, a providing a form for parents to use that actually goes under our current policy. Yeah.
Okay. So if there's no questions regarding education committee, um, Mrs. Prisco, we did meet for athletics. You want to?
Sure, I could take it. Um, if I don't lose my voice by speak, but we did meet, um, and Mrs. Pomeriz, he did talk about the winter sports. So I won't go over that again, but I would like to congratulate all our full sports students on all their successes. Again, they were here. And winter sports, like I said, has begun and Mrs. Pomeriz, he had touched upon that. We also spoke about the field and gym sound system. Mrs. Pomeriz, he purchased a portable speaker with a microphone for now and is working with Mr. Cruz to find the funds and the budget to cover the cost to replace the field and gym sound system. So hopefully that will get replaced. Winter cheer is an ongoing discussion. There's not many girls that it's, um, decided to go out for that. So we've been discussing that. Also within discussion, we talked about the gym usage and Mr. Mr. Cruz and Mrs. Pomeriz are working together on the process and making sure that the paperwork and all the building use forms are properly, properly filled out and completed. And, um, the communications with other, you know, whoever uses our gyms is much more clearer and schedules are sent to us on time because we do not want to pay custodians over time. So.
Yeah, I have an idea about that because I noticed your facility's use policy does not have a, a corresponding regulation, which we can generate during policy committee that kind of spells out facility use in a much more detailed way to prevent some of that from happening in the future.
Great, great. So that'll get work done. Um, we also have a new program this year at Mrs. Uh, Mrs. Palmerezi is working on to find space for them, um, for their practices. It's the winter color guard. So they're practicing. So she's trying to get them some space in the school. It's been a little difficult for her to try to find some space for them. The winter leadership summit took place on December sixth at West Essex High School. We had eight, eight of our Verona student athletes attend. There was a motivational speaker, um, Sean Baptiste. Um, he was a former basketball player from St. Joseph's in Matutian and Fairleigh Dickinson University. He had an injured injury while playing basketball, so he was their motivational speaker. And also I think the last thing we talked about was a possible field trip for the Mois lacrosse team. Um, which would be to the Naval Academy and the Hall of Fame. And that would take place in March. So if they, you know, if they could get that going, that sounds like it's a very interesting. Field trip and I don't, did I miss anything?
About it all.
Okay.
I have a question about the speaker system. So is that affecting any announcements that they hear? No, cause I know they have the, the other system like on their phones. Like if there was a lockdown, they would get that notification automatically.
It's like the sound system in the gym and now on the field.
Okay. So just for like when we're announcing. Okay. Um, and then another question I have, um, because you were talking, you were talking about. Oh, winter garden and looking for funding for that. Um, has Mrs. Palmerezi talked about, um. Like finding ways to incorporate or attract students with disabilities. To some of these sports or finding athletic programs that are more geared for students with disabilities. So they can sort of take part in some of these programs, um, more meaningfully.
I think one, the main reason with this program is it's just winter color guard. She's just looking for space.
No, I understand.
But I'm not sure if she has, I mean, I don't.
So that, I mean, that.
I had that conversation with her, but, um, yeah, we can have that conversation. Sure.
Okay.
Just want to say this report, I know you gave us some more detail, but it's, uh. Talking words, discussion, key steps, discussion, 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 end date, ongoing, ongoing, ongoing. And the status was, so I'm just saying, I know you gave us more clarity, but maybe Mrs. Palmerezi could settle a few more details.
I think there's something in the middle. Moderation.
Committee report is very short and simple, but has some word of honor.
Point taken. Um, are there any questions on, on, uh, that committee report? If not, we're going to move to finance and, uh, Mr. Day and I, uh. Attended the finance committee meeting. So if you want to go with that.
Sure, um, the board secretary report, so the report was certified. And that is something we're going to miss. I'm going to miss this nice document that you can fall asleep to and. Great information, but, um, but I know that. Mr. Cruz and Joyce, uh, certified, getting certified every year, every, every month. Um, school bus, old school bus, we're still, still trying to sort out, uh, you know, what to do with that bus. We're looking at other options for bidding, still trying to work through 100 in county. Um, so, um, we're just going to see what we can do to get an additional bid at a higher dollar value. Cause we don't be, you know, keep it away from nothing and, uh, it is, it definitely has some value. Um, regarding the order presentation, I know you're all looking forward to seeing the order presentation today. But we already had a couple of presentations and, uh, the order partner, Ray Sarnelli, um, will be presenting in January. So it'll be the first meeting in January, the auditors will be presenting. So hold your hats to get the new board members and you'll get the order presentation at the same time. Um, yeah, crazy. Uh, the next thing is E-rate, um, Mr. Cruz discusses the E-rate proposal. Basically, E-rate is a consulting service, um, that will help Mr. Blage and the IT department file for grants. Um, as we know that, uh, dollars are hard to get and, uh, there's lots of grants out there. But Mr. Blage and team are focused on the day-to-day operations and don't always have a chance to dig under the covers about what grants potentially we. Could get in Verona. So, um, Mr. Cruz recommended this E-rate consultant, um, that he's been investigating that will be helpful. And it's at, uh, minimal cost at hourly rate. So hopefully, uh, they can help us out with that. Um, Mr. Cruz talked about the H-back grant, so we'll be, uh, hopefully moving forward with that. Grant option with our, our new architect. Um, and then also something we talked about was verify residence. It's a organization that will help us validate residency, residency verification. In Verona to make sure that the students that, you know, go to our district and, you know, are taught by our staff and teachers. Actually live in the district or they don't live in the district that they're paying a fee to come to this district. Um, so again, it's, uh, something we've talked about for years to do. And I'm glad Mr. Cruz was able to get an organization that can help us with that. And he waited long enough where the rate even got cut in half. So we appreciate that. Mr. Cruz always watching every dollar that goes out this, uh, out of the district here. So, um, and then, uh, Mrs. Prisco mentioned the field gym sound system. So we were able to share the cost of two VHS and athletics to get that. Moving forward and, uh, that's great. So that's all I have.
No, I was just going to add, you know, like, uh, an example is the field and gym sound system. So what we're trying to do to work more efficiently and effectively in our committees. If there's a topic that applies to more than one committee, we're going to add it to that, it, to the agendas. So each, so groups of board members have opportunity to vet it out with different administrators. So we were able to talk about that through athletics. We were able to talk about it through finance. And I think it's going to, going forward, it's going to be a better, um, opportunity if there's any overlap to let it come up in several committees. So everybody has better opportunity to vet it out. So that's just a good example of that. But nope, you've.
I just wanted to piggyback on that comment. So just to, uh, I think a, a good, um, show of collaboration. And, and that, and that example, uh, amongst athletics and then VHS. Uh, because at the end of days, some folks thinks that there's like a pot of money. Um, it, you know, under my desk and I would say, hey, you know, I can resolve that for you. Um, and, and honestly, it's, um, it basically is just repurposing the budget that's already established. Uh, outside of the reserves for cap reserves and maintenance reserves that we have in case something happens in case, you know. Um, like we had the asbestos abatement, um, over the summer, right before the start of school, we're like, okay, let's scramble, let's actually take care of this. That came out of maintenance reserve. But, uh, a, a great example, I think that, that was actually perfect. And then, uh, working with the bill, building administrator, uh, Ms. Chicago and, and then working with, um. Laura Palmerezi, Mrs. Palmerezi on, on, on this request, it was actually something that they both kind of like said, okay, let's, let's look at our lines. And, and let's figure it out. And, and they were able to do that. So that's actually great.
I prefer to just think you have a pot of money. But is in terms of, um, if, if we're going to move forward with this residency verification service. Are, are we still paying an administrator to also do that job or we're done with that?
Very good. That's, that's gone. Yeah.
Another question I have is, um, we used to have a grant writer. We used to pay a, um, a staff member in town, a stipend to write the grants for us. And this person is very successful in getting us grants because they were a very good grant writer. Is that something we would consider bringing back?
You think that stipend is still in the, in the VEA.
It is.
Uh, contract.
Yeah.
We can look for someone. We just have to advertise.
Right, an athletic, right. Okay.
We have to look at the dollar math too, because ninety-nine percent of the grants are, are, are kind of given to you already or through the state or something. So. It, I, I've seen, it, it was a really hot trend, maybe like 10 years ago, public education for districts to hire grant writers. And like now they're, it's so few of them still remain just because they couldn't justify the cost of their salaries with that. But if it's a small stipend, then it, it maybe it's worth it.
Yeah, and, and you're right. Most of the grants we get are entitlement grants. So you really want someone who's going to apply for those competitive grants. And one issue that Verona has along with Melbourne and Cedar Grove and some of the other I factor and J factor districts. Is many grants are not open to us if we don't receive title one fundings that, and you know, we do receive some title one, but not enough to put us into that. So that is why, um, it can become cost efficient to keep a full-on grant writer. But if we can find someone, the stipend, yeah.
So if there's no more comments on committee reports, we're going to move down to public comments on agenda action items. So if anybody, um, would like to address the podium on anything that's being voted upon in the resolutions. Now would be the time and please state name, address, and there's a three-minute, um, time constraint.
Good evening, Larry Ianeusi, eighty-nine P's Avenue. Thank you to the board. Good to meet you, Ms. D Giuseppe. Um, I know we've exchanged, uh, several emails. Dating back to January of twenty-two, I approached the board with the nomination of a gentleman who meets all the qualifications. And has the characteristics as mentioned in the present policy seventy-two fifty, prior to any of the previous suggested policy changes. In my opinion and the opinion of many other Verona residents who have served on governing bodies like myself. I feel that the original policy, which was published in the board's policy and procedures of January twenty-twenty-two. Should be the tool to measure and evaluate a nominee of the same month. That criteria should be binding and a nominee should not have to be measured by a New York sick of rules. My examples given to the board are two. An umpire or referee doesn't change the rules governing a game in the ninth inning, fourth period or final quarter. The rules must be the rules and they are legally challenged, legally changed and voted upon by a governing body. Another example would be if a Verona resident applied to the planning board to make in addition to their home in January of twenty-two. It is measured and evaluated by the existing township rules and not the ones to be approved eleven months after the application. With that being said, my nominee, Patrick S. Curcio, is a very worthy candidate to have the auditorium at HB Whitehorn named in his honor. He surely meets the criteria of years of service to music education with twenty-four years in Verona and thirty-two years overall. Pat served the district of Verona in multiple capacities, music instructor, VHS band director, HBW band director. And Verona's music department chairman from nineteen eighty-two to two thousand and two. Pat moved over from VHS to HBW in nineteen eighty-one so that he could build student interest and musicianship. Within a school that was struggling and barely had sixty band members. In a short period of time, Pat and Lou Buds had increased the band to approximately a hundred and twenty musicians. And the bands were now competing in statewide exhibitions, winning first place trophies in multiple categories. Pat not only managed to get Verona recognized as the premier music department in the county, but in the state. He worked tirelessly with his students and has remained friends with countless many through Facebook. The thirty-two letters I provided the board without instruction are testimony to his ability to teach them a love of music. Pat also had a dramatic effect upon the students who were struggling personally. He helped multiple students find and express themselves through music as expressed in the letters I've given the board. At your meetings of twenty-twenty-three, please consider voting unanimously in favor of naming. The auditorium at HBW as the Patrick F. Curcio Music Auditorium. I have copies of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions I'm willing to answer if the board has any.
My only comment, um, is, you know, you, you started by speaking at the rules at the time, right? Um, but based on the rules of the time, you know, the, the candidate that you're looking to nominate, you know, didn't make it on a, a board agenda to vote. Yay or nay for, um, I, I think now the, the rules that we're, we're looking to hopefully approve tonight. We'll make it so that if we can get one hundred signatures and it, it, and this person will then be presented to a committee that. Diane would, would be ultimately responsible for putting together. Um, and, and if, if, if this candidate, if this candidacy makes it out of that committee and then to the board. Um, I, I, I think it's likely I, I would look to vote yes. Um, but I, I don't think that, you know, we necessarily would, it's fair to say we changed the rules. I, I think we, we put in a, you know, I, I would still want. One hundred signatures before I, I'd look to vote yes to name anything for anyone. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we, we can get those hundred signatures and it, and if it comes to us, you know, I'd, I'd be hopeful to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. We, we don't have, um, criteria set at this point with signatures or numbers or anything specific.
There's, we didn't vote to have, the policy doesn't read a set number of signatures.
Nope. And there's no regulation.
Okay. I don't know why I thought a hundred was. Okay, right. All right. I'm sure I did. I'm, I believe you. I still, I believe my brain.
I'm just curious if a hundred signatures were requested. Who's going to verify the signatures? Because there's a superintendent who has a full-time job. And I'm just wondering if Cheryl Slabarsky has enough time in her day to. And do you, will you accept, um. Uh, signatures that are electronic. There are people in the United States, across the United States. There are two or three people in Europe. Uh, how are we going to verify those signatures or how are you going to verify, actually superintendent D Giuseppe, how are you going to verify those signatures? Uh, that would be my first concern. And I'm just going to reiterate. That, uh, I know that I made the suggestion that, uh, Pat be honored. Back in January of twenty-two and there was a policy in effect. There may not have been a board meeting. I'm not sure, Mr. Walker, of, of how your procedures would come about. To have that brought to the board for, uh, for a vote. But it was established at a time when the board had an existing policy. That's why I opened up stating to that point, but. Understanding that a new policy might be in the works. I'm willing to understand, willing, um. I'm able to understand that a policy could be amended or adjusted. But I think some consideration has to be given to the fact that. When I nominated Pat Curcio, there was an existing policy. And as I gave an example, you can't change the rules of the game in the ninth inning. You can't, you shouldn't. You can. But you shouldn't be changing the rules when something is presented. And then eleven months later, say, well, you know, look, we have a new policy. We need a hundred signatures. We need somebody to be dead. We need them dead for ten years. Which has already been brought to the board and rejected. So please give that some consideration, you know. I would have been at Alliance Club, uh, holiday dinner party tonight, but I decided that this was a little bit more of a priority. So again, I, uh, willing to answer any questions. Ms. Fresh.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other public comments on agenda items? If not, we're just going to move on to board discussion items. And the only, um, topic that I wanted to bring up, I want to, um, congratulate board member Prisco. Uh, New Jersey School Boards does have a school board academy where we do our own mandated. Training and there is a lot of optional training, uh, to be had. And Mrs. Prisco, um, recently satisfied all the requirements to become a certified board member. And the requirements were to have a minimum of twenty credits. And attend county programs, attend the workshop. So I think it goes a long way to your dedication to the position you were elected to. It goes to accountability to the public. And it goes to respect and accountability to your fellow board members for taking that time. So thank you and congratulations on that.
Thank you very much. And congratulations to you, Lisa, because you also completed.
And congratulations to you, Lisa, because you also completed, you are considered a certified leader.
Certified leader, yeah, that was over sixty hours.
But yeah, congratulations to your achievement as well.
So we did put a note out to Ms. Peterson regarding what we would need to become a certified board because you could have individual board members that achieve different levels and you can achieve different levels as a full board. And Mrs. Prisco and I did meet with our incoming board members. And once we reorganize and set goals and decide as a group, that might be something that we want to look at. And we're almost halfway there. And the way New Jersey School Boards does it for a full board is they look at a four year period. So every time you go to the next fourth year, your last year drops off. So where we are now, we're about halfway to being a fully certified board. So that might be something we want to look to consider going forward. Does anybody else have any discussion items?
So I have one, so I guess it's for for the Reorg meeting in January. You know, we got two new board members and there's there's a possibility we could see a new board president or a new board vice president. I guess the question for the group is, if we have a new board president, how is that board president going to know what the desires or like the requests are for the existing board members and the the incoming board members about what committees they might want to be on? And part two, would we look to vote on committees at the Reorg meeting or the second board meeting in January?
Generally, the board president puts that out, but I don't mind taking that on and putting it out to the current members and the new members as to a description of each committee, what they do and to see who's interested in what, and then funnel that to the board president.
We do it that way, then then once that election happens, if we wanted to take a twenty minute break so the board president could review all that, you know, what everyone wanted or we're going to public so everyone sees it, then we could just put it on the agenda right that in there as a resolution to elect committees that that night.
Yeah, that.
Works.
That works.
It helps business start happening faster because if you wait, then your committees aren't meeting the following. It takes weeks to get the committee sections. Okay.
That's it.
Yeah. And then lastly, I would be totally remiss. It is Mr. Day and Mrs. Drappi's last meeting with us. And to Mr. Day first, I met you nine, ten, nine years ago when I got on the board. Yeah. So your your service to the district, your commitment to this board, to your fellow board members, to the different superintendents has been, you know, very, very valued. Your input, your comedic relief always. And it's been a real pleasure to work with you for these years. I've learned a lot from you and I'm going to miss my carpool buddy. And to Ms. Drappi, we did not know each other before at all. So we really got to work closely together these past three years. And the value that you've brought with your insight actually wearing the hat of a parent in town, of a teacher, of special education, what you've brought to the board has been invaluable. We joke about your questions, but without them, I mean, that's our job is to ask questions and you have gone above and beyond in your job and your service. So I've learned a lot from you as well. So thank you, thank you for your time and and good luck. And I don't know what you're going to do with all your free time now.
And my kids, yeah.
I'll just say something real quick to Jim. We're going to be missed, your comedy up here is going to be a little different without you sitting up here, but it's been great working with you for my four years up here on the board. And thank you for all your support with me running and just always calling me for advice or me running things off of you too as well. So I'm going to miss miss you a lot and I wish you well and don't be a stranger. And Sarah, same, it's been great working with you for the past three years and your dedication to the town and the students is immeasurable, so thank you.
Sorry. And with that, I am going to begin the roll call on the resolutions. We'll be voting now. And I need a motion to accept routine matters resolution number one. So move by Mrs. Drappi.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Prisco, is there any discussion?
Yes, actually. So one of the things that I really felt that Kinnon did well was recognizing the role of board members officially. It's not an easy job, it's a volunteer job very often. You hear a lot of complaints and not a lot of thank yous. So I asked Mrs. Freski if I could bring that process here and she thought it was a good idea. So we have two board member service proclamations that I'm going to read tonight. Whereas James Day did faithfully and conscientiously serve the Verona Public School District as a member of the Verona Board of Education representing Verona. And whereas James Day has served as a member of the Board of Education from January eighth, twenty-fourteen to January third, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas Mr. Day has performed his duties as a member of the Board of Education in the best interest of the students and citizens of the Verona School District. And whereas, as a result of his dedication as a member of the Board of Education, Mr. Day has earned the highest respect and the deepest appreciation of the Verona School District, its students, staff, community and administration. Now therefore be resolved as follows. The Verona School District publicly acknowledges that Jim Day, James Day, sorry, did faithfully and conscientiously perform his duties as a member of the Board of Education. The Board of Education wishes to commend and to thank James Day for his years of dedicated service to the school district. Its students and staff extend their sincere best wishes in his future endeavors. That the resolution shall become a permanent part of the minutes of the Verona School District Board of Education of Essex County, that the secretary shall be directed to cause copy of this resolution to be appropriately reproduced and delivered to Mr. Day. And you don't have to do that Jorge because I have one here for him. And Mrs. Drappi. Where whereas Sarah Drappi did faithfully and conscientiously serve the Verona Public School District as a member of the Verona Board of Education representing Verona. And whereas Sarah Drappi has served as a member of the Board of Education from January seventh, two thousand and twenty, to January third, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas Mrs. Drappi has performed her duties as a member of the Board of Education in the best interest of the students and citizens of the Verona School District. And whereas, as a result of her dedication as a member of the Board of Education, Mrs. Drappi has earned the highest respect and the deepest appreciation of the Verona School District, its students, staff, community and administration. Now therefore be resolved as follows. The Verona School District publicly acknowledges that Sarah Drappi did faithfully and conscientiously perform her duties as a member of the Board of Education. The Board of Education wishes to commend and thank her for the years of dedicated service to the school district. Its students and staff extend their sincere best wishes in her future endeavors. That the resolution shall become a permanent record, I'm sorry, permanent part of the minutes of the Verona School District Board of Education of Essex County and that the secretary be directed to cause a copy of this resolution to be appropriately reproduced and delivered to Sarah Drappi. Thank you.
Thank you for that, that is a nice recognition. With that, if there's no other discussion, can we do a roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have quorum motion move.
Excellent. The next group of resolutions to vote on is personnel. And I need a motion to accept for approval resolutions one through one point six.
So move.
Move by Mrs. Prisco. Second by Mr. Day, is there any discussion there? If not, Mr. Jorge, can we please do the roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Oh, Mr. Jorge. Mr. Cruz? Yes.
Mrs. Drappi? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Next, we have education and we are going to pull resolution number six. And that was the one that really does not require board action on the classroom and library material, so that's going to be pulled. So I need a motion to accept resolutions numbers one through eight excluding number six. So move by Mrs. Drappi, second by Mr. Day. Is there any discussion on those? Mr. Cruz, roll call please.
Sure, resolution went through a excluding number six. Mr. Walker?
Yeah.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have quorum.
Okay, the next section is policy. So we are going to table resolution number two because that needs to go through policy committee, so we're going to table that for now. So we need a resolution, a motion to approve resolutions number one and two.
No, no, just one.
Oh, just one, I'm sorry. I just said that. Move by Mrs. Drappi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Day, is there any discussion? Okay, we will do the roll call, Mr. Cruz.
Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have quorum motion move and resolution number one.
Excellent, thank you. And the next section is special education. We need to, a motion to approve resolution number one. Move by Mrs. Prisco.
Second.
Second by Mr. Day, is there any discussion? Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco? Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have quorum.
Excellent, next is athletics and co-curricular. We just have one resolution there, I need a motion to approve. Move by Mrs. Drappi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Day, is there any discussion?
Because usually we have one coordinator for capstone, in this particular case we broke it up into two. So we, so that I recall the stipend, I was splitting the stipend into, and that's how we're doing it.
It actually wasn't a stipend, it was a sixth period. So it's it's a calculation of fraction of the sixth period because it's a marking period and a half. So each one is getting an eighth of that versus that.
Any other discussion? Mr. Cruz, can you do the roll call please?
Sure, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco? Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have quorum, thank you.
Excellent, next we have finance. And I need a motion to approve resolutions one through seven under finance. Move by Mrs. Drappi, second. Ooh, second, I'm going to give it to Mrs. Prisco. Is there any discussion? No, Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call?
Sure, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yeah.
We have quorum.
Excellent, thank you. We have no need to go into confidential session. So I just want to announce that our next meeting is January third, twenty. I'm sorry, I forgot, public comment on any topic. Anybody? That's why we like you, Mr. Cruz.
George Kozaczek, Verona, New Jersey. I just wanted to thank the outgoing board for their hard work and dedication. I stay here just for you, Jim, all night. All right, can't wait to have sushi with Jim on Tuesdays now. Now I do want to thank all of the hard work that you guys did, you know, putting up with the public is very tough. And thanks for the hard work. I wanted to thank Diane for her first hundred days. I do see a nice transition, I like the way it's flowing, not that my opinion matters, but you know, me and a couple of other parents feel that it's flowing and like the ongoing emails, that flow of emails is very helpful. And that's it, so thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you.
See you soon.
George, I'll see you at Foodtown again on Sunday at noon.
So I wanted to say happy holidays to everybody, our next meeting. I don't know what we're going to do without you, Jim. Oh, wait a minute, I redact, we have an addendum.
Oh, we have an addendum.
I did not, yeah, I did not see that, my apologies.
So and there's a couple of things on here.
Let me go back to addendum, we have an addendum resolution regarding personnel. And I need a motion to approve addenda resolution number one. So move by Mrs. Drappi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Day. Is there any discussion?
Not just a quick mention, glad to see that we have a nurse, although there is no replacing Mrs. Petronico. I did talk about the snake committee, so we're going to talk about public. My daughter was incredibly upset to find out that Mrs. Petronico was going to be able to retire and enjoy her life outside of school and enjoy her family. So I'm excited to have somebody else step in, although there is no replacing Mrs. Petronico.
Yeah, my my kids had her, so she's been around quite a while, so good luck to Mrs. Petronico. If there's no other discussion on that, Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call?
Sure, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Drappi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have quorum, thank you.
Mrs.?
Education.
Got it. Okay, we have education, I need a motion to approve resolution number one. It's for professional development presenter, Miss Duffy.
So move.
Move by Mr. Day, second by Mrs. Prisco, oh, by Mrs. Drappi, I'm sorry. And is there any discussion on that? If not, Mr. Cruz, the roll call.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Maybe my last resolution, yes.
I thought you said no.
We have another addendum that pops up.
Mrs. Drappi? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
And Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have quorum, thank you.
Okay, happy holidays. Our next meeting will be our reorg meeting and that's Tuesday, January third. It's here in the Verona High School Learning Commons at seven PM. And I need a motion to adjourn. So move, second. I'm going to move by Mr. Day, second by Mrs. Drappi, it's nine eleven and I need a verbal, aye. Aye, aye, aye. Thank you.